Okay, thank you very much. So glad to see a room full of people here. I know all of us that are here care about our children here in Blyville. And this is such an important meeting for us, for our community. And just ask that everyone give each other some grace this morning. I know this can be a very emotional meeting, but we are here for the children. And let's just keep that in mind. Let me introduce Secretary Aliva, who is with us this morning. Secretary?
Thank you, and I want to echo the sentiments from Ms. Rollins. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and being part of our conversation, which is what we're going to be engaging in today. Just to kind of give some historical perspective, many of you may have been here just over a year ago when we had a joint meeting with the state board and the local school board to talk about some concerns that we were seeing in declining enrollment, fiscal sustainability, kind of the long-term projections for the Blyville School District, and most importantly, student performance. So at that time, we engaged in a partnership where we agreed to provide some additional support. And we've asked the Blyville School Board to provide frequent updates to our state board, and they've done that in Little Rock over time. But we've gotten to a point where we need to make some maybe more robust or long-term decisions about the future of what is our agency's role, what is the support role from outside folks, and what does the governance structure look like for Blyville. So this morning, we're going to kind of follow along with that conversation that's been going on for over a year to keep this dialogue at the forefront of making sure we're doing what's right for our students. So what's going to happen is this is a formal notice meeting where the board has the authority to take action and take a vote on any possible recommendations that are made by our agency. We're going to do an overview of the journey of some of the topics of where we've been for the last year and a half historically, and then talk about what we're seeing now for future projections. And after that presentation, the local school board will have the ability to respond and provide an update to this board and engage in dialogue. It'll be a formal response where anybody that wants to speak on the board's behalf will be sworn in so that it'll be an official oath and an official testimony. And then our board is going to open in a public forum and discuss amongst each other some of the information that was presented to them. And they may ask some additional questions of our agency or of the school board here locally. And then before they take any action, they're going to allow public comments that will set some time aside to hear from people that signed up that want to address our board as well. So it's going to be a robust and informative morning, and we look forward to engaging in that conversation. I do want to recognize that we have some local elected officials that are here today because they know how important this conversation is to community. So I know I saw Senator Wallace, if you don't mind standing and saying thank you for being here. Also Representative Joey Carr is here as well. And I believe we have some representatives from Representative Crawford's office joining as well. I don't know if you're here, if you could stand and be recognized. And if there's any other local, the mayor's here? Okay, I was like, I'm looking around, I was like, I may have missed some. Thank you for being here. If there's any other local elected officials, and if you want to address this board, we would welcome that as well. But if I missed anybody, it's not on purpose. I just want to give you a chance to stand and be recognized. And thank you for being here. And just thank you. I know there's a lot of school administrators, teachers, local school employees, as well as parents and business folks and concerned citizens that are here as well. So without further ado, Ms. Rollins, I'd like to invite Stacy Smith from our team to come to the podium and then provide some remarks and give some overview.
If I may take a little privilege, I believe everyone, I'd like to introduce our board. I know it's, we can't really see name tags from back there. So Dr. Sarah Moore, our chair, is with her family today, but she is joining us by Zoom, and we're always glad to have her expertise. We have Adrian Woods, Randy Henderson. On the other side, we have Dr. Gary Arnold, Lisa Hunter, and Lee Keener with us this morning. And our member Ken Bragg is also joining us by Zoom this morning. So we're glad to be here and have everyone's interest and valuable comments this morning. So thank you. Go ahead, deputy.
Good morning. So this morning is considered to be a hearing because the school district has appealed the Level 5 classification. And so the Department of Education will have a presentation of no more than 20 minutes, probably be less than that. And then Blyville has 20 minutes to also present. And so at this time, I'll ask you to go ahead and do the oath for anybody that's going to present during this testimony part during the hearing.
Where are people in that are going to be part of the testimony this morning? So please stand and raise your right hand, please. Okay. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner with the Division of Elementary and Secondary Education. Actually excited and happy to be in Blyville this morning. We've had a team working in Blyville all year. Our team has made some great relationships with teachers and staff in the community here. Blyville's a great place to be. And Blyville does have a bright future ahead of them. But at this time, there are several things that we have concerns about that we feel like they need additional support in. And so those are some of the things today that I'm going to walk the board through. The first is a slide that we've seen more than once. This just shows the declining enrollment that the Blyville School District has faced. All right, this is not something that's uncommon to this area of the state. You've seen multiple school districts in the area having declining enrollment. All right, but this is also an opportunity where industry is coming in, bolstering, and we've got to make sure that our school systems are prepared to provide what we need in terms of attracting industry here. And as we walk through some of the data today on the school system, we're going to see that that's not necessarily the case. All right, at this time, they're down 102 students even from last year's enrollment numbers. On academics, this was the simulated letter grades that were recently released on last school year's Atlas testing. Okay, not the test that were just given here a few weeks ago, but last year at the end of the year. So you can see for '23-'24, the primary, the elementary, and the high schools all have simulated letter grades of Fs. The middle school does have a letter grade of a C. And that's something worth celebrating, all right? But we still have three schools that have Fs. And we still have some concerns about the achievement academic performance happening in all of the schools. This shows an overview of the academic performance of Blyville students from last year's assessment. And what I want to show here is when you look at that for like the elementary school, third through fifth grade, and it says ELA, and it says first percentile, that doesn't mean they're number one. Okay, in a percentile ranking, you want to be at the 100th percentile. You want to be the best performing out there. That is 100. Blyville's scoring in the first percentile on the lowest range of districts in the state. That is all districts in the state. For ELA in elementary school, for math, also less than the first percentile. It wasn't even a full percentile point. It was like half of a point. Science, first percentile. So of all the districts in the state, they are in the lowest achievement level you could be in. For the middle school achievement, you see third, fifth, and eighth. Again, the lowest in the state. The middle school is where you saw a C letter grade, and we're going to talk about why they have a C. But we still have the overarching concern that the achievement is exceptionally low. High school, again, you see ELA in mathematics in the fifth percentile. Biology, you had a jump in that one at the 18th percentile. But all of them are well below, making Blyville School Districts one of the lowest performing school districts statewide. The growth scores, again, for the elementary school, you're seeing that they're in the lowest percentile. And when we talk about growth, growth is measured by individual students. Each student is predicted to make a year's worth of growth. All right, and so when you look at this, you see like for elementary, when it says 116 out of 306, or 37%, that means 37% of the students in third through fifth grade in English Language Arts met their expected year's growth. Only 37%. That means more did not. And to emphasize this a little bit more, they're already behind. For kids to catch up, they need to be making more than their year's worth of growth. All right, because we have catching up to do because we are scoring so low.
People understand, and if you could just go deeper on, what is an expected growth target? So when we talk about students performing at or above grade level, we use a term called proficiency. And when we look at proficiency rates, when students graduate from high school, are they going to be able to read on grade level and be able to be ready to obtain what we like to call our three Es? Are our students going to be ready to be employed, enlisted, or enrolled? Well, there's some basic skills that you would expect students to have with an aptitude to meet one of those destinations of those three Es, with every student being on their own individual pathway. So if we're in the first percentile, and that's just of all the students in the state meeting what we call proficiency, that's a problem. Now, we know that kids come to us from all walks of life. And our schools are going to do the best they can to take a child from where they are and get them to move along the continuum of learning as much as they can. So that's where we establish an individual learning growth target. So those students get a snapshot of, okay, you started day one of school here. Your growth target is individualized to the student. Every student has their own individual growth target. So if we start here at the beginning of the year to demonstrate at least a year's worth of growth, we expect you to finish here. It may not be on grade level, but you can still be progressing towards grade level. So when we say that only 37% of the students met their individual growth target, that means those students will never reach grade level. Because you've got to exceed your growth target to get to grade level. So we're setting up two-thirds of the students in this district to never achieve grade level work. That's why that's a big deal when we talk about individualized, setting an individual learning target.
Yeah, when you're looking at the growth thing here, and I do want to highlight the middle school ELA, 78th percentile. So then you saw more kids meeting their growth or exceeding. And on science, you had 82. So that's what you want to see, but we need that numbers in all of those categories to be well over 50, 60, 70% of students meeting their growth. So I think if anything, it shows in ELA and science, a lot of times when you get into situations from the Department of Ed, a lot of times we hear, you don't understand our students, you don't understand our community. It shows right there that these students can, and it shows that staff can. We just have to get our systems aligned so that we see this across the board. Another category in our performance rating that actually helps create the A to F letter grade is growth of the lowest 25%, which for most districts, when you talk about growth of the lowest 25%, you're talking about the students that are scoring Level 1 on the assessment. Okay, which is the lowest you can perform on our state test. And it means that you are behind grade level. So for most districts, when we say the growth of the lowest 25%, it's taking into account the kids who scored Level 1, and then maybe some kids that scored in Level 2. For this district, they have more students in Level 1 than in any other group. So the lowest 25%, that doesn't even cover all the students in Level 1 that are behind grade level. So again, you're seeing math in the elementary in the first percentile, the 19th percentile, the 12th percentile. These numbers have got to get well over 50%, 60%, 70%. You see some highlights there in the middle school where they did achieve those. You see some highlights over there in the high school. So this does speak to intervention that is working. Right, but we've got to get it where we're getting more kids pulled into that and so that we get more kids moving achievement. Again, growth is something that we measure and we value in our state, but that does not undermine the fact that achievement is what the goal is. We want every student to achieve grade level proficiency. And this school district at this point in time is not doing that. Graduation rate from the previous year was 77%. Again, that's in the fourth percentile, the lowest performing districts in the state. The average graduation rate in Arkansas is 88 of its 89% graduation rate. So again, we're behind here. We're not graduating our kids. And when we talk about this readiness towards merit and distinction, that's actually new. And that's building on career pathways. All right, and this area is booming with industry opportunities for kids and building career pathways. You have interested colleges and industry partners to work with. This is an area in which we believe that this school district could excel in and create some really strong pathways where kids are not only graduating with their high school degree, but they're graduating with industry certifications that can take them straight into a job, a high-paying job. That also brings value to the community, value to the business partners, value to our students, and it changes lives. So when we talk about support for the district this year, they had some outside contracts. They had TNTP, which works with teachers on lesson internalization and supervision. They had really great reading, which is again worked with K-3 leadership and teaching coaching. And they also did an RFP and brought in a group called Educational Directions. This is something that the department folks worked with the district staff to put together an RFP in which they solicited outside help to come in and support administrators within their school district. Educational Directions has been onsite, at least by the time we did this presentation, 64 onsite visits, 51 virtual interactions, 115 documented touchpoints. And this was for the last month's presentation. So if they've been here since then, it's increased. I think that the support for this group has been positive. I think the district has enjoyed working with this group, and that is something we'd probably like to see continue. That's a positive. Intensive support provided by directly from people at the Department of Education. On-site support, over 100 days of direct onsite support from the OCSS team led by Ms. Whitlow. We've facilitated multiple school visits to the Academy of Math and Science in Little Rock with the board. We've engaged in governance engagement with their board. We've done facilitated meetings with the School Boards Association. We brought in board president from Palm Bluff under their school board, where they had had some systems issues before and governance issues to come in and talk about what they had to do in their district. We've worked on operational support, trying to provide financial and staffing assistance through multiple different offices in our agency. So this support is reflective of Level 5 support, which is what we're recommending today. And I'll compare this in a minute with another district that we've seen come before you guys in the last year. Another example of intensive support that our department has provided is onsite visits for safety. Office of Educator Effectiveness has been onsite at least three times, helping figure out to get teachers on pathways or making sure that they're coded correctly. We've had the Division of School Academic Facilities and Transportation come onsite. We've done numerous visits with our Learning Services team, reviewing literacy plans, doing site visits to the primary and elementary buildings to ensure that the high-quality instructional materials are being used effectively. We've provided K- through literacy support through the really great reading program that we talked about earlier. The Educational Cooperative has provided intensive support. They've documented 185 onsite visits. The director regularly meets with the interim superintendent. She has led dialogue and had conversations with the board about contracts, about best financial practices. They've actually contracted with their business office for additional financial support. They have content teachers and specialists that are onsite providing mentoring. So there is lots of support happening at the school. I want to thank the Blyville teachers, and I want to thank the Blyville principals and administration. They have been receptive. They have been open to the assistance and the help. We have people who are showing up to work to work. And they love their community, and they love their kids. And I know this board loves their community and loves their kids. So people are showing up, but this is a district that is in need of a lot of support to be able to get them out of the hole that they're currently in. And I want to kind of compare this with a district earlier that we kind of saw had systems failure, and that was Watson Chapel. They had coding issues, they had some finance issues. We went in, directed by this board to go in, still Level 4 support, kind of marrying almost some of the same support we saw provided here. The difference was, at some point, Watson Chapel was able to maintain without us directly standing there saying, you've got to do this next. Have you done this yet? Have you checked that yet? They were able to maintain and continue to make progress with the outside contracts that they brought in. What we're seeing here is we've got lots of support here, but we're still having to do lots of reminders, lots of assistance. At this point in time, we get more calls. Our OCSS team gets more calls and work to work in Blyville than we do all the other schools under state authority. We spend more time right now in Blyville than any other place. Again, that just shows the amount of support that is needed to get this school district on track.
So if I can add, when we were before this community over a year ago, we made a commitment as an agency to say enough's enough. We can't leave these children in limbo. We got to support these teachers. We got to support these administrators. And we had to bring in some outside help and work with local help, like Education Cooperative. Those numbers you saw, hundreds of onsite visits, was our agency sticking to the commitment we made. What we're going to hear more about is the frustration of how much we have to babysit the people that are elected to govern the district. The teachers are being receptive. The students are learning. The administrators are getting in the classrooms. They're doing everything we need to do. But when the elected officials who represent this community are derived to make tasks and decisions, it's like we have to pull them along. And that's where we're seeing in making recommendations to this board some of the frustration.
So on supervision of instruction, promising practices that we've seen this last year is we've seen administrators in the classroom doing more observations. We do believe that the quality of feedback needs to improve. And again, that's some of the contracted work and the support that needs to be provided to improve instructional practices in the classroom. But you see the change over the years of documented observations or feedback in classrooms to what we currently have. So that is an improvement. Human capital, at the beginning of the school year, the 2025, the green was the number of licensed teachers. The yellow, 14, was partially licensed, and the red was unlicensed. Currently, we went back and pulled the numbers at the end. And again, we've had our staff onsite at least three times, working directly with teachers to get teachers on a pathway. At the end of last year, we had, especially in the primary grades, you had virtual instruction happening, which was a concern. That's been alleviated. They have classroom teachers working with students. High school, we're still struggling in areas of licensure area and working on that. But they have improved in that area. But it's with direct support, but they still have a long ways to go. I will tell you, we don't have a complete confidence in the data that we're pulling. So when we're pulling these data numbers, it's data that's been entered, right, from district folks. And again, that's where the governance part of our staff, we're not in there entering the data or coding things. All right, so part of our recommendation today of authority is to be able to get in there and really get into those systems and make sure that the data is accurate. When looking at interim assessments, we're seeing promising data about interims throughout this school year. Again, folks are teaching, folks are working, folks are in classrooms. We're hoping to see improvement in Atlas scores from the test that was taken just in the spring. But again, we're talking about a district that is so low that we're not expecting to see high achievement levels out of this last testing. We're hoping to see better growth scores, but we're not expecting to see large numbers on the achievement data. So concerns related to governance. Lack of coherence and leadership. Again, they've had six superintendents in eight years. Lack of fiscal oversight, some fiscal inefficiencies, lack of internal controls with some of those data elements I just talked about. And currently providing, we are currently providing intensive support without governance oversight. So human capital and leadership, this is probably one of the biggest concerns that we have. This is kind of the timeline for this last year. In June of last summer, Ms. Blankenship was appointed as interim superintendent. In August, the previous superintendent was terminated. November, they posted the position, but not until November. So they terminated the superintendent in August, but didn't post the position until November. In November, they reviewed some, they had some applicants that they reviewed, but the decision was made to stay with the current superintendent. They didn't feel like they had enough quality candidates. had enough quality candidates. And at that point, we were like, "Don't settle. Get the right candidate." We wanted to support the district in that decision. February, they decided to do a consulting firm. But again, they let their previous superintendent go. In August, they didn't hire a consulting firm until late February. And again, a lot of this has to do with our staff asking, "What are you doing? Have you done this yet?" In April, the firm brought two of the twelve applicants to the board. The board declined to interview the two applicants. On April 28th, the superintendent position was reposted. April 29th, they had a special board meeting to discuss the next steps regarding the superintendent. No action taken. In May 8th is when we came to you and said, "We have concerns. They don't have a superintendent." Since May 8th, they have, on May 22nd, they called a regular board meeting and decided now they're going to interview three applications. They're literally doing interviews this week. They have an applicant here today, which personally, I would be embarrassed that I'm interviewing for a superintendent on the same day that the State Board of Education is coming to your district to consider or not whether or not you're going to be the So again, this shows a lack of urgency in determining leadership coherence, and it's that, it's constant. This right here, if anything, I think reflects more of...
Babysitting.
All right. Per pupil expenditure report. So this is another thing that we have some concerns about that we want to talk about. The fiscal integrity or efficiency of the district. There are some things here that are raising some red flags and some concerns, that if we continue to stay on this path, the district will be, come in fiscal distress. They're not there right now. And I don't want, and we're not saying that anybody has purposely misused money, but there is inefficiencies occurring, okay? When you look at the state averages compared to the district spending in certain categories, there are questions to be asked here. So pointing out some pieces here, when you look at like custodial, the average state cost per pupil is about $111. For this district, it's about $618. When we compare that to, because Secretary Oliva, when I was reviewing this data with him, he pushed back because he wants to make sure what we're saying is accurate. And he said, "Well, Stacy, they're a smaller district. So how does that compare with districts that are their like size? You know, they're in a rural community. How does that compare?" And so actually went and pulled data from districts their like size, and in most of the cases on this page, they're overspending per pupil amounts in these areas than districts in their like size. In the custodial, for districts their like size, where we have up here, the state average is 111, for districts their like size, we saw some districts that were maybe around 300 and some that were less, but they're still again hitting at that 600. Where they were comparable, the only two areas I could really find where they were comparable to districts in their size was the sanitation one and accident insurance. And everything else that was on here in districts compared to their own size, they were over. So again, this is an opportunity for savings in this district and to go into back and look at. And it also is the question of, are we coding correctly? Like, there could be some serious coding issues that maybe is telling a different story. But when we pull the data from what they've entered, this is what it shows. When you're looking at district operations overall, their current operating budget is required to be turned into DESI on September 30th. That budget is supposed to be approved by the board. That did not occur. The board did not approve their budget until October. The district has spent, according to data they've entered, 1.5 million that was not budgeted. So when you look at their overall budget, they have lots of areas in which are red or negative. That means the budget that they submitted was not very accurate. For fiscal year '25, revenue is down significantly, about 15%. They're losing students. When you lose students, you lose funding, all right? And so adjustments have to be made. The district had not reconciled their bank statements since April of 2024. So when we contracted with work with the Educational Service Cooperative to come in and assist with finances, this is some of the work they're doing, is getting their bank, getting everything reconciled. So again, that leads to overall concerns. In fiscal years '22 and '23, they actually had surpluses. They were putting 2.3 to 3.5 million into their building fund, all right? Since then, they've actually had to go into their building funds and expend money. So in fiscal year '24, they had to spend 2.1 million, where they, before they were actually saving money. In this current year-to-date, they're almost at $1 million. So at this moment, they are spending a lot more money than they previously had in the past, and they're losing students. Their ending fund balance right now is not at a huge concern, okay? We calculated it about 18%, but it is, it's gone down. It's down 15% than was previously. That is a concern. So when you stay on this trajectory, you can see where it's heading, all right? So these are things right now that we need to catch now before it becomes a problem. Other things that, as we're looking at this, additional pay in the form of bonuses or stipends to date is over $200,000. This, again, it's about, this just raises questions. When you have a job description that says you're, let me give an example. If I were the curriculum and instruction person in a district or the assistant superintendent, I'm being paid for that job, and that's my job description. What we see happening here is a lot of times those roles then have additional stipends put on top of them to arrange PD. Well, arranging professional development is probably within that job description. When asking for specific job descriptions on the stipends, we've not seen those yet. It doesn't mean they don't exist, but at this moment, we don't have them. When we see federal funds for homeless money, we have stipends that are given out for homeless services, that's federal funding that has to be documented, especially when it's paired with an employee who's being paid with state dollars. You have to have time sheets. You have to document how you're providing services to those students or that population, right? Or you end up having audit findings. So they have lots of stipends in the excess of over $200,000 that we just need more information about. We need to clarify. We need to make sure that their salary schedule is set and job descriptions are clear. So they're projected to end the year with 2.9 million net legal balance. Again, that's down 18% from previous. It's about, a difference of about $600,000. Board-related expenses. So one of the questions that was specifically asked from one of the state board members was, "Has this board received training?" And the answer is yes. One, we've organized training, okay? And then so we started looking at, well, what are the expenditures that we can show that they've actually had training? And I'll tell you, we were surprised. We know that we have board members who have traveled to Atlanta, we have board members who have traveled to Biloxi, we've had board members who have traveled to Little Rock numerous times for lots of conferences. I'm not saying that training is not needed, because it is needed, but at this moment right now, we can calculate up to $56,000 on board expenses. And some of those items are listed on the board. You have reimbursement to individual board members, and that ranges from $700 up to over $7,000. You also have a line item in the budget that has non-district employees, all right? For a lot of districts, non-district employees are board members, right? That budget here in this district is like at $30,000, but we can't tell who those people are right now, because we haven't gone in and been able to dug into the audit part of it and look at the receipts. It just raises questions about the use of funding and what we've got going on here. We've got $12,000 in credit card expenditures. Until we see the receipts, we don't know what those are for, okay? Legal services to six firms from the board. Again, we know that they fired a superintendent. We know they did some internal research on practices there, but again, we've got six firms there. We had the superintendent search firm of $7,500, which at one point, they rejected to even interview any candidates that that search firm put forward. So again, it's lots of questions about what we're spending our money on and what the governance section is in this area. So our recommendation, and this is going to be the last slide from my presentation this morning, is our recommendation is that this state board classify this district and need a Level V intensive support, because to be blunt, we are providing Level V intensive support right now. We'd also recommend that the state board remove the authority of the local board and authorize the commissioner to assume the authority of all local, of the local district's board of directors. And we would recommend that the state board direct the Commissioner of Education to appoint a superintendent and pursue the possibility of a transformation contract.
And Board, just so you know, and I think Stacy and her team should be also commended for their commitment to making sure that we're providing those Level V intensive supports. We're providing more support to these teachers, to these school leaders, to these students, probably almost in any other district. But when I think about, what is the school board's role, right? What are their primary responsibilities? And you look at governance and operations, right? Part of that governance is overseeing the budget, which we have a lot of questions about, and I don't want to have to come back to this board and say, "We're in financial urgency because we're spending money that's not budgeted and we're not able to balance the spreadsheet. We can't even turn in a budget and meet the statutory deadlines," when that's one of their number-one functions, is to make sure that the district's financially stable. And then governance, one of their jobs is to hire a superintendent, which we've been asking them to do for a year, and they still haven't done it. And it wasn't until last month, all of a sudden, "Well, we'll start interviewing folks." Where is, where is the urgency on the board's behalf to make sure that the systems are going to be supported and sustained? And I feel like when we came here a year ago, we said, "We have to act with urgency." These students are going to be in third grade once. This is, we just had high school seniors graduate. That was their senior year. Are they going to be ready for the next phase of their lives? We can't sit around and wait for people to figure it out that are never going to figure it out, and that's why we're coming to the board with this recommendation.
So that concludes my presentation. Because this is a hearing, the Blaville School District has up to 20 minutes, and then the board can ask questions to whoever you want to ask.
So at this time, I would ask the district, who is going to go ahead and make your comments And if you would please identify yourself before you start. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Jennifer Blankenship, serving as the interim superintendent for the Blaville School District.
Good morning. I'm Desmond Hemmott, serve as the board president of the Blaville School Board.
Let me just say that when I was in this position and spoke before you guys back in August, I did not think that I would still be here, but we know it's about the students, and we needed someone to fulfill this role. So I was thankful that the board chose me to do this, because this is our district. We care about the district. It's all about the students. So our commitment, my commitment, is about the urgency of improving student outcomes, providing equitable, high-quality education for all of our students, all means all, and accountability through collaboration and partnership. We've had some increases in our number of licensed teachers, a waiver teachers and partially licensed. The number has gone down since we've even put this on here. We've had one aspiring teacher. Our virtual instruction, we're looking at next year. We have our building principals, they've been hired. They've worked hard with the support from Educational Directions, getting some coaching. We all have. It's been our mission to make sure that we give our students what they need, to give our teachers and the principals and everybody the support for their particular positions. You've seen this slide before, but we've just increased the amount. When we partnered with Educational Directions, they brought in some great coaches, even one for me to guide and support and give ideas, and it just was a great partnership, and that the board decided to continue that particular partnership for the next school Yes, our academic performance, Dr. Smith spoke to that. We have historical challenges, and we acknowledge those, but however, we do know that progress is on the way. We're using data-informed instruction, increased coaching support, benchmark assessments indicate early signs of growth, especially in K-3 literacy. Some of the information that she just went over, that's been shared with you. We've highlighted some of our gains and our growth, where we're trying to move our students. We've implemented evidence-based instructional practices, curriculum improvements, getting everybody high-quality instructional materials, letters training, eye reading, wondrous. We're trying to do all those things to make sure that teachers are supported and that they can support our students and grow our students, and then move them as well. Most of our students were Level 1 and 2. We know that growth has occurred. If you looked at the data I sent you earlier, within Level 1s, we moved some students out of that into Level 2. There is room definitely for improvement, and we know that we have to move the needle. We have to push our teachers to push our students and have those data conversations. If you're looking in here, just some of the fourth-grade data, how the students dropped from Level 1, moved into Level 2, and these are just still some of the things that Ms. Smith spoke to earlier, also for math. She spoke about the growth that was shown over years' time at the middle school, and so we're still using those interventions. Every campus has targeted interventions with their students. We're doing our best to make sure that they take it seriously, know that it's real, and we have to move our students. We have to teach our students. We have to deliver to them the content and give it to them on grade level. We know grade level is really huge, and although they may, you know, it's going to take some time, but our point is we have to do the work. Our enrollment update that she's talked about, our decline in students, it's a big deal. We are trying to do some recruiting to get those students back. We've had some issues here, but we can't make excuses. We've lost students, and we want them back. It's not due to dissatisfaction alone, just rule flight, people moving to bigger areas for more things to do, but maintaining student support services despite our reduced numbers is what we're trying to do. That's what we're wanting to maintain and make sure we support the students that we do have, and try our best to bring those other students back. At this time, I am going to let Mr. Hemmott address the board issues and speak on some of those things, but do know that the district has taken into account everything that's been shared from our local cooperative to the Office of Coordinated Support to Educational Directions, so that we could do the work to move our students, to grow our students, because without students, there's no school. And we know parents are sending us the best they have, and it is our job to educate all of them, and that's what we're trying to do.
Good morning. I'll first start with a legal memorandum in opposition of the Level V classification. This memorandum presents factual legal and policy arguments opposing the Arkansas Department of Education's recommendation to classify the Blaville School District as in need of Level V intensive support. It also serves as a rebuttal to the letter issued by the Mississippi County Chamber of Commerce dated May 27, 2025. Blaville School District has complied fully with the ADE guidance, achieved measurable academic gains, and acted in good faith to ensure systematic improvements. Pursuant to DESI Rule 8.09.2, Blaville School District has afforded, was afforded 20 calendar days from the receipt of the May 14, 2025 notice to appeal the Level V recommendation. days from the receipt of the May 14, 2025 notice of, to appeal the level-five recommendations. However, the hearing was scheduled for May 29, only 15 days later, depriving the Blavos School District of its full legal window to prepare its appeal. This procedural error undermines due process as guaranteed under the Arkansas Code annotated 25-15-201 Administrative Procedures Act. Blavos School District's full compliance of measurable progress. We know where we were a year ago. Some of the same information is being brought to us again. We knew Blavos was at, this would be a heavy lift. We've accepted every avenue of help and the resources to improve our district. Blavos School District has engaged with the Arkansas Department of Education, recommended to consult Meyer Graham, ex-superintendent. She's been in, in position for the past two months, working with our finances. Blavos School District contracted with Educational Directions and adopted its recommendations. They came to us as an external partner. We knew we needed leadership support, enforced guidance around our administrative practices, and they've been here on the ground. The district has met them, and we've accepted every recommendation that they've brought forth. Blavos School District has also welcomed the transformation partnerships. We put out RFPs for administrative support, instruction and curriculum, hiring, recruitment and retention. We've engaged with the leadership of Academy of Math and Sciences to get those services to Blavos School District. There has been some delay in some of the responses from the district pertaining to gets particular information. Those barriers and obstacles have been removed. With myself, working with Ms. Whitlow and the Arkansas Department of Education, we've collaborated with Academy of Math and Sciences. We've toured the Academy of Math and Sciences twice, and the superintendent of the Academy of Math and Sciences was invited by me to the Blavos Elementary School, and we spent a day in the district here. We're looking for changes. We're looking for something new to help improve our district. We have not closed the door to any opportunity to improve our district. Blavos School District has assigned mentors to our novice teachers. Blavos School District has increased the number of licensed teachers and implemented licensure pathways for non-licensed personnel. One school, as mentioned earlier, has improved from an F to an C in one academic year, demonstrating progress in student achievement. We can improve. We've shown improvement. This has been a year. We knew we had issues coming into this school year, but the Blavos School Board has taken it very serious, and we have worked to remove barriers and obstacles. Up until May the 8th, I was in direct communication with Sheila Whitlow weekly, weekly. For some, I, I, I thought this was my job, as many text messages and phone calls that I was receiving, to help remove obstacles and barriers to progress in the Blavos School District. I met that challenge. I answered every call and every text message. Blavos School District followed ADE advice to retain its interim superintendent and retain a professional search firm. Back in November, the words of Secretary Aliva, "If no one meets that threshold or the best candidate rises to the cream of the crop, don't settle. We're not going back." We then, in good faith, accepted Jennifer Blankenship to continue in that role. Through the next couple of months, January, February, from, I'm sorry, December, January and February, we knew that this would be a heavy lift for Mrs. Blankenship, that she was trying to step into that role and do the best, and she's done the best that she could. She had a vo, vo, voice and vote of confidence from Secretary Aliva at that time. However, we knew we needed to get a superintendent, a credential qualified superintendent for the Blavos School District. We voted to get, go with McPherson and Jacobs for our superintendent search. McPherson and Jacobs brought us two candidates. The board unanimously, one of the commissioners of the Board of, State Board of Education, asked about a vote. It was brought to you that the Blavos School District's board was dysfunctional. We had split votes. We have not had a split vote in over four years. The Blavos School District unanimously, unanimously, the board unanimously, said, "Hey, we didn't get the, the pool of applicants that we were, we desired, so we didn't deny or decline to interview the, the candidates that were brought forth." As a matter of fact, the timing of this, with the extension of the two-weeks window to get more applicants, get a pool of applicants, just expired. And we moved quickly to get those interviews scheduled for this week. While it, it may be embarrassing to some, we have a challenge, and we had to continue the work. When we reviewed and heard of the May 8 state board meeting and what was presented, it was disappointing and discouraging. However, the board rose to the challenge. We still need to lead and guide and help move the district forward. We didn't tuck our tails. We didn't run away from the challenge. We became more committed, more engaged, to show that we're not dysfunctional, that we're willing to do the work, and that... Blavos School District operates under the model policies of the Arkansas School Board Association. Legal advice is consistently sought from ASB Council Lucas Harder and the Blavos School District, Robert L. Coleman. The board is governed by court-mandated eight-member structure under the 1993 Voting Rights Act Order. Despite the votes are consistent, consistently unanimous, one descending member does not reflect the board's general cohesion or effectiveness. The chamber's May 27, 2025 letter advocates state takeover based on perceived failures. However, none of the chamber board members have children in Blavos School District. No chamber board member has attended a Blavos School Board meeting since August 2024. This letter overlooks Blavos School District's recent academic and administrative progress. Blavos School District improves, improvements, especially F to C, school turnaround, contradict claims of dysfunction. We can and will make progress. It's been one year. We were here last August, terminating the super, going through the termination process of a superintendent. We didn't get here last year. This year didn't culminate all of these breakdowns or failures. This has been a pattern over the last five to six years, that we've addressed, we've identified, and we take accountability for those things. Blavos School District is worthy and deserving of an opportunity to continue this journey of improving our schools together. It takes the community. It takes all of us, parents, teachers and administration. And I commend the teachers and the principals for this last year's work. We've welcomed in Educational Direction, the co-op. We've welcomed every resource in. And we, as a board, have made changes. We've adopted policies and accepted recommendations to improve. The frustration that was brought to you May 8th was more in regard to us table an action item K at that time to interview Dr. Andrew Curry and Dr. Ryan Huff. With the State Department official, very frustrating, leaving the meeting, saying, "The state board will take care of this," out of frustration. Those two candidates have been art, one is here today, and one was interviewed Tuesday, along with another candidate that was interviewed last night. We are trying to get there. We're working hard to get there. This should not be a recommendation out of a favor of frustration, because we didn't hire a preferred candidate at the time, but just to give us a fair chance to do, as Secretary Aliva asked us to do back in November, get the best candidate possible. By extending the application period for two weeks, that's what we wanted to do, to get a, a, a fair pool size of qualified people. At the time they brought the two recommendations to us, they did not have the scoring rubric of those candidates compared to the other candidates that had applied. How did we get to the final two was the question that was asked. And once again, I, I, I refer back to one of the state board members saying, "What was that vote?" Since we had a lot of split votes, and the question was answered, that was a unanimous decision. We didn't see the scoring rubric. We asked, "Hey, how did we get to these two applicants?" Dr. Keith Williams said, "I know them personally, and I gave them a call." So, yes, we paid an 18, we're paying $18,000 to a search firm for an individual from McPherson and Jacobs to tell us that, "No, these applicants didn't apply, that I called them, I knew them personally." Two of those applicants, Ms. Whitlow has told me, before we even knew who the applicants were, "Hey, I talked to two guys. You got two great candidates coming. Get out of their way and just let them do the job. I know them personally." Dr. Andrew Curry said, "Hey, I know Sheila Whitlow personally," during his interview Tuesday night, "that I've talked to her about the school district." Let me give you some historical background on this superintendent process. An interim superintendent that we wanted to get was Sally Bennett. Sally Bennett was dead-set on coming in, meeting our administrative team. She was going to do a day in this district. And she said, "Hey," I said, "Well, what I would like you to do is talk to Sheila Whitlow and get a perspective of the State Department on some of the challenges that they're seeing." And she said, "Oh, yeah, great. I'll, give me her number, and I'll give her a call." The next morning, the day that she was scheduled to do a day in the district, she changed her mind. That hurt. Sally Bennett would have been a great interim superintendent at the time that we needed. There's another superintendent out of, over near Perrigo-Jonesboro area. She was retired. She was helping her daughter run a clothing store. Made a call to her on a reference, referral. "Hey, would you be interested in working as the interim superintendent for the Blavos School District?" "Sure. That, that would be great. Let me make sure that I can get away from my daughter's store and come spend some time with you guys." She agreed. I sent Teresa Watley at the time, sent out memos, informed the board, "We're going to do a day in the district. Come meet my administrative team, the team that we have in place, the people that you'll be working with. Yes, 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 sir, yes, sir." Well, I would like for you to talk to Ms. Whitlow of the State Department. You want to guess what happened the next day? She canceled. "Oh, I'm not interested at this time. I'm not understanding how, when I approach those people, those candidates, they're eager and, and up for the challenge to come to work as an interim superintendent in our district." And there are several others that have had interest and then declined. Not saying that there's any red flag there, but we've tried to get credential and qualified leaders in the interim spot to, before, while this process of us looking for a full-time candidate. We've done the work. A level-five classification at this juncture would unfairly stigmatize a district showing measurable improvement. This is one year. One year. Educational Directions, some of the funding that we were talking about, how we went in and got some funding, you know what that's for? Those external partners that we've reached out to, ed. directions. Labeling Blavos School District as a felon factory undermines moral, hampers recruitment, and alienates stakeholders. Blavos School District performance satisfies the accountability intent of the Arkansas Educational Support and Accountability Act. And in conclusion, the Arkansas Department of Education has borne discretion under Arkansas Code 6-15-2916, but such authority must be exercised in alignment with facts and procedure. Blavos School District respectfully requests the state board reject the level-five recommendation, affirm the district's progress, and continue constructive partnership. We are here to work with you and move the district forward. Thank you.
At this time, we will open it up for board questions. Would you mind standing at the podium? We may have some questions from the board. Board to my left, is there anyone there that would like to answer, ask a question this morning?
I do. I'd like some clarity on the timeline of the procedures that you mentioned, the 20 days that the board is saying they were not given, and...
Yield to our school attorney on that matter.
Thank you. Would you go to the podium? Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll also need you to identify yourself.
I'm Robert L. Coleman. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Reedburg, Public and Coleman, and I represent the Blavos School Board. If you'll look at the letter that was sent to the Blavos School District, you'll see that the letter itself, in, on the second page says that we have 20 days to respond. And if you'll then turn to the first page of the letter, you will see that the letter is dated May 14. So, it's very evident that since today is May 29, that's 15 days, and the rule that cited says we have 20 days, and the letter says we have 20 days, but we're here on day 15. That seems like kind of a rush.
Thank you. Can we hear from the department as well?
Yeah, can I clarify? So, correct, we scheduled a meeting on this date. They requested their hearing within seven days of receiving their letter, okay? So, our timeline of having this hearing was okay. If they wanted to ask for an extension, they could have. If they had filed their letter tomorrow after we had this hearing, it would have been a problem. If we wouldn't have heard from the district or known that they were going to ask for the appeal as late as yesterday, the day before, we might have regrouped. But they asked for their appeal within seven days.
Thank you, Beth.
I'll have to dispute that. You can, you can look at the letter. You have it. It doesn't say, "You'll be given more time if you ask for it." I mean, I would just challenge her to show you where we were told that. It's, it says that we've got to respond, and we have 20 days to respond, and we were given 15 days before the hearing. It says a hearing's going to be held today. It doesn't say, "If you respond, then the hearing will be delayed. If you ask for more time, the hearing will be delayed." It says that there's going to be a hearing today. And in light of the fact that a hearing was going to be held today, we did not want to go unheard on the merits of some of these arguments that were made. So, we strongly object to this. We believe that it's a denial of due process. It's a denial of your own rules and a violation of your own rules and a violation of our due process rights under the Arkansas Administrative Act.
So, you were given 20 days to respond, and you responded seven days later?
No, we were, we were given 20 days to respond and were, and were told, "But there's going to be a hearing on the 29th." And so, the response was filed on the, on the, well, I believe it was filed on the 21st, seven days later. Which we felt was out of necessity. We, we didn't want to be unheard, come in here. They, they don't care, they're, they, they don't object to this action.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Daniel Schultz, Council for the Department. The board's counsel is correct. The letter does reflect the timeline he laid out. However, what it says is that a special meeting has been scheduled for May 29. The letter further later down says, "If they choose to file an appeal," which is discretionary on the part of the board, "they may file an appeal. If they do, we're prepared, we will conduct the hearing today." Now, as, as Deputy Commissioner Smith pointed out, they could have raised objections to the timeline. Hearings get rescheduled, meetings get rescheduled. No objection was made. This is the first the board, the, the agency's been made aware of, of a timing of the hearing objection. But the, the rule sets out, they have 20 days to appeal. Once appealed, we have six... But the, the rule sets out, they have twenty days to appeal. Once appealed, we have sixty days to conduct the hearing. Both of those requirements were complied with. They appealed within seven days, which is inside the twenty. Again, discretionary on their part. And then this is with it, we schedule, we have held the hearing within sixty days following them posting their notice of appeal. Again, the appeal was silent on this issue.
Thank you. I appreciate, thank you. I appreciate that clarity. I feel confident that we're within, we followed everything appropriately.
Further questions of the board?
I had another question for the board president or the board chair, excuse me. You mentioned a couple of candidates that you were interested in that were, after you spoke with them, they were later discouraged. But both candidates you mentioned, you were looking into them for interim positions, correct?
Yes, that, that's what they had agreed to because at the time, this was early on after the termination of our previous superintendent, that one was retired. She was eager to come help work with the Blavell School District on an interim basis until that position was filled.
When you say early on, can you give me a timeline?
This was September, October-ish, after the state board meeting in August of last year.
So the superintendent, previous superintendent that was fired in May, or excuse me, put on paid leave in May. Ms. Blankenship stepped in. And so we're talking five to six months later, you're still looking for an interim?
No, well, five to six months later, August, September, but two months that, that we were there at that point of getting an interim in for the year.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to kind of follow on that questioning. So you had an interim in place and you were continuing to search for an interim. What was the rationale for that as opposed to spending your time and effort in finding a permanent superintendent?
Well, we, we were getting ready to start the school year in August, September, and October. It was brought, you know, it was our knowledge that Ms. Blankenship didn't have the credentials or qualifications at the time, so she was going to apply for a waiver. So during that time, we were under the guidance of Mrs. Blankenship saying, hey, I can complete a waiver, apply for the waiver with the state, and we would be good at, at that time. However, we needed someone in the seat to start the school year. Ms. Bennett said I would come in as, on an interim basis to get you to the next superintendent, not putting a specific timeline for six months or a year or to finish up the school year. But it was understood that she would work with us until. And then we were also getting information on the transformation partnership as, as well during that time. Also looking for support and leadership through an RFP as well. We had two options that were presented to us and that we were considering at the time.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things that I want to hit on was the fact that multiple times in their rebuttal, they talked about Sheila Whitlow discouraging. Their rebuttal with that statement just shows why this board needs to be dissolved. We have spent thousands of dollars and invested hours of ODE people's time driving to Blavell, spending hours upon hours, days upon, within these schools, working with the teachers, working with the administration, asking people to be, to consider to come to Blavell. What this board doesn't realize is when we're talking to these folks, they don't want to come to Blavell because of this board. He referred to Sheila Whitlow as a red flag. Sheila, stand, Sheila, stand up. There's not a red flag on this woman. She spends countless hours in this district. And if they're, this is the example of why they need to be dissolved. We cannot do our work here and get this district where they need to be when we have opposition like this that literally in their reply for why their students are the lowest performing students in the state, blame Sheila Whitlow, who hasn't been here but this year. They did say in their statement, one thing I do agree with, this didn't happen overnight. And it surely didn't happen because Sheila Whitlow showed up. If anything, they've received more support, they've received more guidance. We're asking tough questions. And let me be clear, they don't like the fact that Sheila Whitlow is here because we're asking questions. And it's about time that somebody came down here and asked some questions.
Ms. Lee Keener, do you have another question? We need to have quiet, please, in the audience.
Can I get, there we go. Thank you. I appreciate that, Ms. Smith. Thank you so much for that. I think you articulated what I was thinking in my head much, much better than I could do. There is something else that the board chair said that I agree wholeheartedly with, and that is that Blavell School District deserves to continue moving forward together. And I believe at this time, if the board is unanimously resistant to moving forward, it might be time that the state and the district move forward together without the board.
Are there any further questions? Okay, we're going to go ahead.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. I want to talk about the superintendent's search still. We're talking a lot about the interim superintendent, and I want to, let me back up. What you are having to do is very hard. It is hard to sit in a room with a bunch of people that are mad at you and defend actions when not everybody always has the full picture. So I want you to know that I acknowledge that. But I also know that you are an elected official and that has responsibilities. And you made a statement that I, it kind of took me back. You said, it was acting like this was my full-time job with as many text messages as I was responding to and I was answering every call. This is your job. You were elected for this. There are months that you will not do anything to the extent that you have had to. But your job to these students in this district is to find them a superintendent and to balance the budget. So I want to talk about, you got two people brought in in April. You decide, you declined to interview them, but now suddenly we're here and you're interviewing them. So what has happened since April? You can pull it up.
I'm sorry, we did not decline to interview at that time. We asked questions for the...
Which were what?
The...
The rubric?
The rubric of the scoring, how we got there, and comparable to all, all of the applicants. We didn't have all of the information that was brought to us at that time. There were some other disturbing statements made to the board from some of the representatives that...
Representatives from the agency, the consulting agency?
Yes, yes. Encouraging us not to, hey, don't disqualify this candidate. He's a good friend of mine. I'll mentor him if you give him a chance. Overlook the DWI that's on his record. And we were like taken back like, whoa, wait. So there, there, there's a timeline of things that had happened.
But from April, the twenty-fourth, when the, or the twenty, yes, the twenty-fourth.
Declined to interview those two applicants.
But have you now brought them back?
They, they were brought, we extended to get more applicants in. The search firm brought those two candidates back as the top candidates that they still deem to be their top
Candidates.
Candidates. The board asked, was there anyone close or comparable just to have three applicants to interview at that time? So all three have been scheduled interviews. Two have taken place and one is scheduled for tonight.
But you just said that you had objections to one of them because of a DWI.
We didn't have objections. The search firm said, please don't throw this person out. We just said, can we open it up to get more applicants in? We never declined to interview them.
So, but why didn't you interview them before now? I mean, a whole month has passed.
We wanted a larger, more time for applicants to apply.
I understand, but here's the optics of the situation. April twenty-fourth, you have two candidates. It's now May the twenty-ninth and we're just now interviewing them. You could reopen the search and still interview those people to show some movement. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. What have we done for a month? And I'm not, I'm, I know I'm railing on you and I know that there's constituent, I mean, other people here on your board. Who was responsible for saying, I will set up this interview?
I, I took that opportunity to set up...
So why haven't we done anything for a month?
We extended the search for two weeks.
But why didn't we interview those two candidates in the interim? That would have just shown, that would have given this room of people a feeling that you're moving forward on something. But let's also not mistake the fact, we're a year into a school that we still haven't made an interview.
We, we've had three interviews in November.
Back in November?
Yes. We had three interviews. We were going to, we were prepared to move on a superintendent. The candidates weren't desirable at that time to be of high quality. So we, we made traction with interviews and seeking out a full-time superintendent. We have not just been sitting back kind of massaging.
Doing nothing for four weeks?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's talk about the budget. Why didn't the budget get approved? Because you're a million and a half dollars over. So who's on your finance committee?
Would you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
I wanted to go back to the budget and I'm sorry, I can't find my slide. We have expenditures of a million and a half dollars that were not budgeted for. So who was responsible for setting the budget? It didn't get approved till, I think you said October, Secretary, or November? October, okay.
Our finance director, but I don't know if she's quite prepared to answer that because we didn't know we were going to be discussing and going that far in depth in the budget. But she...
Well, we're here for a hearing.
Yes. She, and she was, she was hired in August or September and she's here.
Hang on, yes. We need you to, can you raise your hand and be sworn in?
Be sworn in, yes. And you can come up to the mic.
We need to swear you in before you, before you make the comment, please. Right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Rhonda Southern. I started as the director July one of this year. I came from Rivercrest. I was there for twenty years as district treasurer. So when I was asked to fill this void, that was because I started in April as accounts payable. Shortly after that, the superintendent was gone, so was the director of finance. So I was there by myself, flying by the seat of my pants, doing whatever was necessary to keep everything afloat. Shortly after that, we hired a new payroll specialist. She and I worked together until July one, when they asked me to take over. At that point, I felt I had some sort of authority to make decisions. However, I have tried, in my opinion, and tried. I've seen many, many things that are not correct, that are not right. We got with, this district only has private audits, which is one reason a lot of things were not caught. I spoke, I spoke with her as, after July, when I stepped in and I said, have you, have you seen this, this, and this, and things that I felt were very uncouth? She said, yes. So we worked, and that's, I believe that was one reason that some of those things were changed because of audit, not because of me asking. I have asked and I have brought up the stipends. I have brought up and asked several things that I felt were not done correctly. As far as the budget is concerned, we did put together a budget, but we had very, I was not, I've done budgets for twenty years, but I was not, shall I say, versed on this district. The only thing I, only support I had was the budget from the year before. So that's what we went on. I have questioned many expenditures, but I had no one to stand in behind me to say, no. I've said no plenty of times, but I don't have that backing to say, no. I've, I've asked questions on why this was spent, why that was spent, and why, what was going on. And I just feel like I personally have not had the support. Well, there hasn't, hasn't really been anybody there. There is no superintendent. And I've, I spoke with Ms. Perkins on, on a few occasions, but then she was gone. And we've had an interim, and I do believe that Ms. Blankenship has done her best. But I mean, she's not versed in finance, in the finance. And there's so many things that are done in the finance that is not what I, is not what I'm used to. Because when you have a state audit, everything is brought up and at that point, things are able to be changed. This district has not ever had a state audit, to my knowledge. It's always been a private audit. Private audits are great, I guess, but they don't know the school finance. You see what I'm saying? They don't know, okay, this has to be coded here, this has to be coded here. This person can't be paid that, that person can't be paid that. And I have been trying to bring that to the forefront. But how many times I've, I've heard it so many times, but this is the way it's always done. And I've said, well, that's why we're, this district is where they are, because it's done, always has been done, and it is not correct. Right.
Can you come up to the mic?
I was saying that's the narrative we're trying to get away from. We reviewed all of those stipends. We've gone through some things. We've gone through contracts, found things that could be taken out, things that might have been overcharged, and we've just gone through a lot of those things. So Ms. Myra has been really great in showing me and showing Ms. Rhonda how to go through, look at this, take this out, question this, ask questions about this. So there are a lot of things from the previous year that we've tried to work out, that we've gotten worked out, and still working on those kinks. And so this is where we are in this progress, just still trying to move forward and taking the advice and the collaboration and putting in the work.
You mentioned that you seem very frustrated, that you tried to put your foot down, tried to, to change some things.
Can I, can I say?
Sure, just a second. What, you're standing there, you're in the position of financial leadership for the district. You've got the superintendent standing behind you agreeing with you. What more did you need that you didn't get to put your foot down and to make those decisions and have that authority?
I don't feel like that we had, that I had the support to say that they would tell, you know, I just don't feel like we had the support to go through because of the back knowledge isn't, wasn't there.
The support from whom? Who, who more did you need?
As a whole, like, we don't, I mean, I don't feel like Ms. Blank, Ms. Blankenship, I don't want to say anything wrong, badly about her, but as far as finance, as the, as what I'm used to doing is through like the handbook and these things, and what is legal or what I call legal and what is not. I don't feel like she's well-versed enough to say, okay, no, we're not going to do this, or yes, we're going to do this. And when Ms. Myra come in, then I felt like, okay, this is some, yeah, right. And when Ms. Myra come in, I felt like, oh, okay, then, you know, now we can move forward because if, I felt like if she said, we can't do this and we can't do that, then I felt like, okay, this would be, this would be that we would go forward and change some things. There's some things now that even on the, that was approved by the board as far as the stipends and far as some of the contracts, I don't approve, I don't agree with.
So...
We have classified people being getting stipends when they should not be. I've raised my concerns about that. It's not that I'm trying to be mean toward that person getting the stipend. I am not, that is not me, but ethically, you cannot do that.
Well, that was my question. I guess what I was trying to get at was...
Well, I've tried to bring it up.
Is there, I couldn't figure out whether it was insubordination from those who were spending unethically?
I don't think it's insubordination. I think it was lack of knowledge. And me, and then me being there, like, the first day I was here, the very first day in this district, I was hired to do accounts payable. She brought me in a stack of bills. Uh, Shai was the previous, uh, Director Finance. At this point, I was Accounts Payable. She come in and she said, "You know how to do the job?" I said, "Yes, I know how to do Accounts Payable, I've been doing it a long time." And I said, um, she brought me the stack of bills and I went through it and asked questions, and I said, "Okay, how do I approach the Superintendent on signing off on these bills?" She said, "Oh, we don't do that here." Red flag. I'm Accounts Payable. I felt like I had no, and I, I, I raised that as a concern, but it never changed.
And she's speaking of the last school year, so, and part of that frustration, I think, is because she finished the year, or started the year, and some of those people were not in places when she needed questions. We've done a lot of digging into things and invoices that came that we didn't have the background knowledge, so a lot of her time was spent, in my time, trying to find this previous information. So when she's referring to she and last year, she's speaking of previous people.
Right, and I just, I wanted to talk though about the budget that was set for this year, so was that just based on the previous year?
It was.
Okay.
It was just based...
So then when was, when was that presented to the Board to vote on?
I never knew it was not presented to the Board to be voted on.
So was it presented at the September meeting? So, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what, where did we miss this?
'Cause it is due in September.
Yes.
I never knew the Board did not approve it.
Bottom line, this sounds like a lot of dysfunction.
Mm-hmm.
If those that are in a position of power...
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is appalling.
Yeah, yeah.
But I came here, I felt like I could bring it up and out. I fe-, I felt like we could, I could, okay, July one, we're gonna move forward, this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. Every day, there has been something come up, I'm gonna say from the previous year, that we have spent countless hours on trying to fix. And I'm gonna be honest, and people that come in to help have seen the same thing. Ms. Myra's been in here, uh, working with us, and I just look at her daily, I said, "Do you see what we're dealing with, what I'm dealing with? We can't move forward because we're trying to put out fires from the previous thing, 'cause there's something every day that comes up."
Thank you, thank you. I know Dr. Arnold has a question.
No comment, actually.
A comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, it seems to me, listening to the testimony, that the district is spending a lot of energy and working very hard at climbing the wrong mountain. Uh, as Secretary Oliva has said, you know, "We're looking for systemic change, we're looking for system alignment, we're looking at the bigger picture." The anecdotes are informative, but yet at the same time, uh, Chairman Hammond, you had mentioned that you are looking for change, and I'd like to reframe the whole phrasing of Level Five to see that as the change that the district is looking for, that we're at that point, and, um, because the data sets on the slide deck are really a desperate cry for help, and when we're at that point, it seems to me that there would be welcome arms to the help offered. There has been plenty of open arms to the help previously offered, but this is just an extension of the need for help. And then finally, you mentioned the fact that you're concerned about the stigma that it would leave upon the district, and I hate to say that it's really less of a stigma upon the district, and indeed, a stigma, and please forgive me, on the Board, uh, for their lack of governance in this situation. And so that's, yes, that's personal stigma versus a better future for the district.
Dr. Moore, who is online, have you got any questions?
Not at this point in time, thank you so much, Ms. Rollins.
Okay, thank you. I think my concern goes to the loss of your students, and I know you continually said this morning that you were gonna work at getting them back, and we know how difficult that is. I mean, do you, do you have a plan to do that?
Yes.
Specifically?
Yes. Um, just in the month of April, um, we've come up with some initiatives that we're going out to the community, um, marketing, selling different programs to get our students back in. We've, um, we've met with a third-party student recruitment to take our messages to the homes, make touchpoints, make visits to get those students back. We are working to show the good that's here in the Blavell School District to those parents and students that are bringing their students back. We have seen an increase for the upcoming school year of students returning to the district, and we're working hard to get the message out, to market our school district, tell our programs, um, to tell our teachers that we have high-quality teachers and instruction taking place, and our building leaders are, are leading that campaign as well for each of their schools, and they have the support of the Board.
When is your registration? For next year?
Registration for this school year, the principals are working on setting those dates, I think primary may have already said theirs to start next month.
Okay. I mean, this is so urgent that this gets completed. And it's, it's a beautiful community, you've got industry here, you've, these students need a strong district, and to get them, get them back home to, to learn here, as you know, is so important. It seems kind of late to, to be starting this now, but, um, I'm glad to hear that you are.
Are y'all familiar with transformation contracts? Do y'all know a trans-, so, has there been any discussion by the Board to approach the state about entering into a transformation contract?
Yes.
Ms. Rollins?
Um, are we, was there a follow-up on that? Transformation? Um, so, I think we all acknowledge that this hasn't happened overnight, so my question, and, and so much in question here is, is a question about leadership. So, can, can you tell me a little bit about the tenure of your Board? Is everyone new, or is there some tenure, uh, that people have seen this happen along the way?
Yes, we have four tenure members, Mrs. Wells, Mrs. Langston, myself, and Mrs. Johnson. We have four new members within the last, uh, two years, Mrs. Nichols, Ms. Powellmore, Mrs. Lewis was elected this year, and Mr. Jefferson as well, within the first one to two years.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, I'm just gonna make a comment about how I view, um, the role of the school in the community. And, you know, I, I am not an educator, my, uh, I'm, I'm in the, uh, private industry, private sector. And so, I believe that your customer, or every school's customer, is the business community. What you are, um, asked to do is to create, you know, produce students who are ready for either, um, you know, to, to enter the workforce or the military. Um, and so, that is how you're measured, and to me, the letter from, uh, the local chamber spoke volumes. Uh, they believe that you are not producing...
Recording in progress.
That you are not producing a, uh, a product, uh, and I'm not trying to, you know, use that in any kind of demeaning, uh, kind of way, but your, your product is not sufficient for their needs. So, um, we all, I think, need to take note of that, and, and it is the responsibility of leadership to recognize that and meet the expectations of your customer. So, um, you know, having tenure on your Board, you know, you should be in tune to what your business community needs. And the fact that you have such a booming, uh, opportunity here with industry, just off the charts here, is, uh, I think, very telling.
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, I purposely, uh, didn't really have any questions, uh, just more comments, uh, allowing my peers to ask, you know, uh, different questions. Uh, my comment is, I know it's been brought up, uh, several different times, the, uh, industry jobs, uh, the opportunities that we have here in Mississippi County, in the city of Blaville. You know, when I, when I think about that, I think every student in Arkansas deserves a fair education, and I cert-, and that applies to Blaville as well. And, w-, w-, you know, talking with the State Chamber, you know, males the age of twenty-five to fifty-four, there are sixty-five thousand males not working in the state of Arkansas right now. They either have checked out, not looking for a job, or is out of work. And you, when you crop that down to one-point-three percent, which represents Mississippi County, there's eight hundred males at the age of twenty-five to fifty-four not working, not looking for a job, or has checked out. And, you know, when I think about that, I think about the unfilled jobs here in the industry sector. I think about how hard it is to create pathways. I think about the students, the industries, the pathways. I think every student deserves the opportunity, if they do not decide to go to college, they should have the opportunity to make six figures. We gotta create a pathway of this broken system that we have. Um, you know, when there's lack of education, in many areas, there's crime. And, you know, when I think about crime, I think about weapons. And, you know, one of my favorite quotes by Nelson Mandela, "The education is the most important weapon, which we can use to change the world." So... And we gotta fix this broken system, and it is systemic, these problems just didn't start within the last year, so we gotta fix it.
Board, are we ready for public comment? Anyone, anything? Okay. At this time, we will start with public comment, and we'll go off the sheets that you signed when you came in. I will call three names, we're gonna ask you to come down this aisle, 'cause this is blocked off and we don't want anyone getting hurt, so come down on, on this right-hand side, come up to the podium, and you have three minutes for your comments. We're gonna start with Ross Thompson, Nicole Esken, and Paula Pitts. You wanna come and line up, please?
Yeah, come, come to the podium, yeah.
And we ask that you state your name before you start.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Ross Thompson. I, uh, a lot of people know me here, I was a police officer here for thirty-plus years, my wife is also a teacher here for thirty-plus years, but we've both recently retired, uh, but we are still very active in the community. Uh, we live here, worked here, actually went to school here, stood on that very stage and sang in the choir on occasion. Um, I wanna thank Ms. Blankenship, the teachers and the staff for working under these conditions. There's, that's asking a lot of them. Um, this is a workforce, this is a workplace, and they have endured a lot over these last few years here. I wanna thank the State Board for being here and being blunt and direct with us, we need to hear that. Uh, Mr. Hammond, uh, spoke, and I, I applaud his efforts, but he failed to acknowledge the indefensible, massive failure that the Blavell School District has become. Um, I personally know many of these Board members, uh, and they are good people. I know they're hurt by this, um, disgusting and appalling and unacceptable performance of the Blavell School District. Uh, I can only speak for myself, and I don't know if there was some type of vote that was taken, I heard something about earlier what their positions were, but I can only speak for myself, but I would venture to say, um, that a majority of the Board members, uh, probably agree it's time to dissolve the Board and start all over again. Thank you.
Hello, you all, how are y'all doing today? I know it's a little heavy in the room, um, I just came in late, I had to help with the, one of the candidates for the Superintendent. Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole Esken, yes. And, um, I just wanna just have a little encouragement. I know the place we in, it is what it is. Whatever just happened, it is the past, but I do want to thank Ms. Blankenship for sacrificing, for leaving one position to be a help in another. Thank you, and you are needed. You are needed. To the Board, to our teachers, to everyone in this place, to this wonderful community, thank you. Thank you for showing up today, thank you for supporting everybody. Now, we know we can't help, like I said, the things that happen. It is in God's hand, and we're gonna let His will be done. So my thing is, what are we going to do now? Yes, whatever decision that's made, are the community, will our community step up and do what's needed to help our school? It's about our children, you know what I'm saying? Regardless of what, we have to come together with the Chamber. I am a member of the Chamber Board, and as I stated to Ms. Liz, we're gonna do what we gotta do to work together. There might've been some division before, I don't know, or what, what other division we had, we have to put our personal things to the side and think about what is best for our school, for our children, and for our community. So I'm just here today just to encourage you all, thank you for taking the time to come here to help us, however needs to be helped, so. With that being said, I love you all, and we're gonna move forward, and there is power in togetherness.
The next three names, Robin Freeman Baines, Barnes, Carol Long Rawls? It's hard to read handwriting, sorry. And Vera James, please, come forward.
Good morning. I'm just making sure that it's still morning, 'cause it's been a while since we've been in here. My name is Robin Freeman Barnes. Um, initially, I wanted to throw up my laptop and do a couple of slide shows to the public from a teacher's perspective. I'm a fourth-grade teacher here, and, um, I commute to Blaville every day. I come from Proctor, Arkansas. Um, I signed on to be a teacher.
Ma'am, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, they can't hear you.
We're being recorded.
Just face you. I signed on to be, um, a fourth-grade teacher here. I commute from Proctor, Arkansas, um, every day. Um, did I know what I was gonna face? No, uh, I was not briefed, I was not prepared, but, um, due to the time constraint, uh, I'm gonna talk about the, the teacher's perspective for me, just for the Board. Uh, my background is not in teaching, but I came to teach. I, I, I'm passionate about this community. I, I have a toddler, I have a three-year-old, so, uh, teaching was conducive to those initial years with me being a thirty-seven-year-old first-time mother. And, um, I empathize with the parents here in the community, uh, there are some big steppers here, they step for their children, they show up mother and father, single mothers, homeless mothers. I, I see the parental side as a, as a married woman, and, um, I feel for the community, uh, despite the Board being scrutinized for whatever has occurred. Um, I just would like to, to say that personally, um, I put in an application for Director of, uh, Public Relations, March twenty-ninth. I never heard back from anyone. I'm not here to get that job, right? I could be, uh, not wanting to speak again, 'cause I'm, I'm signing up to be a, a teacher, but, um, I have a Masters in Communication, Masters in Business, and I wanted to convey that message because I was, uh, looking at the bottom-up communication, and when the bottom- And when the bottom-up communication is strong and the top-down communication sucks, you really have, um, no way to fix the, the burning candle that's at both ends. But, um, I spoke with Mr. Jenkins, and he let me know that someone would get back with me. So on with, uh, my personal life, I, I, I kept putting one foot before the other. I, um, have, uh, students with exceptionalities, um, disabilities, dyslexia, who have shown great growth.
Ma'am, you're at, you're at three minutes. We, you need to finish up, please.
Yes, ma'am. I've, I've had those students with exceptionalities show great growth from October to now, and, um, I feel very great. But the thing is about these meetings is, you can't get a full depiction of what's going on in the community when you limit teachers. Teachers should get the most time to speak at interventions like this. This is an intervention for the community. I'm not bullying the board or trying to take over the school board's perspective, but there are two different things that I would have liked you all to understand from the teacher's perspective. Because if we're, if I'm driving an hour, and I'm willing to be a teacher here for fifteen, twenty years, there has to be a, a, an outlet for a teacher to say, "What do you feel?" Because it's the parent, and then it's the teacher. And then, and, and then it's the custodian, and it's the, it's the, it's the jan, it's the janitors, it's the, it's everybody who's hands-on. So to finalize this talk, I would like all district members to make sure that if you ever get into the position where you are, elected official, you're sworn under oath, and you have to do the work, you need to come out and be a big stepper. Even if you get third-party differentiating the problem, you have to come into the classroom to see what the peers feel, what the teachers feel. You can't theorize what we're going through at the board meeting. I've watched you on YouTube, and I've had to cut it off, because I've had a headache. But I just wanna be transparent to say, I've done this kind of work at the Director of Public Relations for Rockefeller Institute Agriculture Department, but as an educator, I care about the black community and the white community and the Hispanic community. And I just want it to be clear that I don't know your decision, but I really, really, really want this community to come together.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you so much for this outlet and opportunity. Have a blessed day.
My name, hello, my name is Vera James. I am the wife of the late Willie James, who spent fifty years, plus years, in Blaville School District. Uh, and my concern, it was mentioned that, uh, in this meeting today, getting rid of the school board, abandoning it probably. And first, I wanna go back for a second. I hear all the complaints and know a lot of things about what teachers go through being teachers in, in the, in the public schools. But my, my concern is, and my main thought is, we pointing the fingers at everybody, but I'm pointing my fingers at the parent. My, 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 my point is that it's how our children behave. When they're being, trying to be taught in the classroom, they're doing this and they're doing that. And one of the biggest problems, I think, is that you need to take the telephones from the kids out of the classroom, so they can concentrate more and... On what's going on. And my question would be, if you eliminate the board and the State Department of Education take over, then are you gonna be in this city as often as the board members are now? Are you gonna be working with the parents, directly with parents? And I think that parents need to attend the meetings to see what's going on, because the school board meetings are open, you get your name on the agenda, you can talk about what's going on. And if a child is dealing with issues at home, if dad is a drug dealer, mama's a whatever, then they gonna have some problems, and they're not gonna have the ability to learn. Because they concentrating on what happened at home and what they're gonna return to when they leave school today. And some of those kids, and we thank God that we do have breakfast for the kids, but some have to deal with not being fed properly, not being taken care of properly. And most important, I cannot stand it, I'm seventy-seven years old, soon will be seventy-eight, is the parent calling their own children stupid, dumb, and crazy. That has an effect on how that child behave when he or she get into the classroom. And so I just wanna say, thank you all for these meetings, and I just wanted to say what I feel like, but I'm still holding the parent accountable for their children.
The next three, James Torrey Hollis, Michelle Turner, Teresa Minor, please.
Uh, my name is Teresa Minor, and I'm the homeless liaison for the district, and, ma'am?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'm the homeless liaison for the district, and I, my question is, um, a question to ask, and how do we deal with the challenges implementing the McKinney-Bento program? Uh, like, uh, we're trying to affordable housing and providing the allowable, uh, making sure that we are spending allowable on their, with our funds. Uh, Ms. Milpad, uh, said that, uh, she has spoken something about, uh, the McKinney-Bento program as far as, uh, this... Yes. And I would just want to know that we only, uh, started the, trying to get, um... Oh, about the stipends. She, she had, this, she, about the stipends, and the stipends only started this year. Um, we've only been able to pay one time out of the stipend. So I was just trying to get an understanding about the McKinney-Bento as far as the stipends, because we've only paid out one time on those stipends. Okay, okay. So that's my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to say hello, Terry, one. My name is Tony Hollis. Um, I also want to apologize for, um, not knowing that there was someone from the state here somewhat working with, I guess, our staff. Um, I think they mentioned the lady, Ms. Shelley, or... And I guess, I guess my concern is, is that where is the breakdown in communication with the representative from the state? I mean, what, what is going on there? We in the community, you know, we'll, me for one was not even privy to this was going on. And so I'd like to know, where is the breakdown of communication in terms of the representative working with the administration? Because it seemed like, uh, from seeing the back-and-forth with the attorney and, and on this side, it seemed like there is something going on there. And so we need to fix that. We need to find out what is going on there, because it's about, uh, trying to get our students to become efficient, correct? And if we can't have representative working with the school district administration, then, you know, I feel like that's where the failure is at, right there, okay? Now, I wanna close on this here. I wanna speak about finances as well. I'm one of the persons in the community that I, I do send FOIs out to the superintendent. I wanna say, I did see a figure where it, it spoke about legal fee, I think I saw a figure eighty-four thousand dollars or something like that. My thing is, is that we have spent a lot of money on attorney fees. When I send out an FOI, I don't specifically get exactly what I asked for. For example, I may send an FOI out asking, "What do we pay our local attorneys here in Blaville, Arkansas?" They'll send me a whole bunch of information that is commingue with a lot of other stuff that I didn't ask for, but I never get the specific documentation in my hand that I asked for. Either we're paying an attorney, or we're not paying an attorney. I'm sure he's not working free. So if I can send out an FOI specifically asking, "What dollar figure are we paying our local attorney?", I should get something in my hand. I shouldn't get, uh, a bunch of crap that I don't know what I'm looking at. And so I would just like more transparency, um, on providing documentation, legal documentation in terms of, uh, attorney fees, um, you know, and ask for it. And so that's, that's pretty much, uh, all I have to say. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, thank you. The next three people, Stephanie Vincent, Tynan Coleman, Colin Robinson. Okay, they may have left. Rebecca Robinson, Sonia Lucas Modaca, and Carissa Williams, please. While she comes down, I'll go ahead and call LaShariae Wilt Smith and Melody Webb. Come forward, that's fine. Just identify yourself, please.
Hello, I'm Melody Webb, I'm a parent. I wanna address that, um, me and my kids, um, I got a daughter, she got AIP, and, um, we've been homeless. And I go to Ms. Minor over at the school board to get help. Me and my kids been sleeping in cars, all type of stuff, and she asks me, "Where, what do I do?" So I tell her what I gotta do to go, you know, make sure my kids lay down, and I, I don't think that was appropriate for her to do that. And another thing, the stuff they send home for the kids on the weekend, which me and my kids don't have a proper place to stay, and that's been three months ago, and I've been asking her, calling for help, I'm not getting any help. But people riding around her in new cars, church members, everybody's living good, but me and my kids is in this program, and we're still living on the streets. Because me and my kid's father had a bad falling out, so I got me and my kids and left. So I go to them for help, I gets none. She want me to sign for any little thing she gives, and it's not nothing. I meant to bring the little food bag that they sent home every Friday. There's nothing in there. My kids are still hungry after whatever little she give that day, that's for that day. They're spending money. They're spend, spending money on themselves and not helping the community. That's what I wanted to say.
Please identify yourself.
My name is LaShariae Smith. I am a mother of three children attending school in Blaville School District. I am reaching out to bring urgent attention to a series of serious incidents that have affected my children's safety, emotional well-being, and rights as students. My second-grade son has diagnosed bladder condition. Despite providing medical documentation to the school, he has repeatedly been denied access to the restroom by his teacher, resoned in multiple accidents throughout the school year. These repeated incidents has caused him distress and embarrassment, yet no corrective action has been taken. My kindergarten son has an active IEP for developmental delay and receives speech therapy at school. Recently, the same school bus driver involved in other incidents got in his face and yelled at him for not hearing the command to sit in the front. Multiple students reported that she grabbed him by the shirt and dragged him to the front of the bus. While the transportation team denies the grabbing, she admits the driver got aggressively in his face and yelled, which is entirely inappropriate, especially for a child with developmental needs. In a separate incident, my daughter was dropped off at an outdated address without my knowledge or consent. The same week, my daughter was confronted by an authorized adult who was allowed to board her school bus by the same driver. I have contacted the principals, superintendent, school board, and even the Arkansas Department of Education in Little Rock, but no resolution has been offered. These events shows a clear failure to protect and support my children, especially those with documented medical and developmental needs. My family is also enrolled in the McKinney-Bento program, program, yet the support we receive was selective and dismissive. The, the district's McKinney-Bento shows favoritism and made me feel ashamed for asking for help, which goes against the purpose and requirements of the program. I am asking for a formal written response from the district, a full internal investigation into each incident, and insurance that policies will be followed and staff will be held accountable to ensure the safety and the dignity of every student in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sonia Lucas Modaca, and I'm a bus driver of Blaville for sixteen years. I just wanna say that, I'm kinda nervous, but anyway, I just wanna say that, um, as a bus driver, um, I love the students. I don't know. But anyway, um, I just thank everyone for accepting me in this community as a great bus driver, and I'm nervous, I'm nervous.
You're doing great.
Um, this is a great school district, and we are crying out for help. I know as the bus driver, we crying out for help. They have, you know, since the new people been in, it's like we have went down as a bus driver. You know, we try to stick together, but at the same time, we used to make twenty-one dollars an hour driving, sitting, now they done took it from twenty-one to twelve, as we sit. And I don't think that's right, because we still have a family to feed, and that's all I wanna say.
The next three, I'm not sure I can understand his first name, but Ms. Leachman, is it Leachman or Loachman? Sharon Coburn and Bradley Ballard. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Michelle Leachman. Um, I'm, uh, I'm here in Blaville. I just moved from Atlanta, Georgia about a year ago. I enrolled four children into Blaville School District. Since I enrolled my kids into the school district, I have also all four children that have a five oh four behavior active plan. My children have been denied their rights of their five oh four be playing, because my kids was repeatedly sent home, repeatedly sent home for what they have written in their active plan. I would have contacted Ms. Walker, I contacted Ms. Blankenship, also contacted school counselors, I contacted Ms. Jackson, I contacted the middle school, Ms. Bennett. I had a daughter that was set in a, in a, when we first moved here, I had a daughter that was set in a, in a, uh, they said it was a conflict resolution. She was set in a room with twenty-five students, twenty-five students, to intimidate her. She was then transferred to ALA. It was students standing outside of my house fighting my children. It's, um, and, and ba- basically, my main concern is about my children having five oh four plans, them are federal plans. Well, I'm also enrolled in the McKinney-Bento program. Ms. Minor has been nothing but help to me. I, I, like, as I tell Ms. Minor, I said, "Ms. Minor, it takes a team." Uh, when I get ready to contact Ms. Walker, or I need to contact somebody from the school, Ms. Minor, she contacts them for me. When she contact them, if they haven't contacted me back in a certain amount of time, she reaches back out to them. Like I told her, you only can do so much. My thing and my problem is with Blaville school system, and I'm gonna say this, because My thing and my problem is with Blavos school system, and I'm gonna say this, because also I have behavioral problems, and I went to Blavos school system. They is very uneducated. Half of the students that is in here, which is my four students, have been suspended numerous of times to where they're at a point where three of my students are about to fail. How are they about to fail? If y'all say that out of 52% of the kids that passed the high school test, that two of my, my two children was out of that 52%, I never had these problems in Georgia. Now that I have my kids in Blavos School District, now I'm at risk of me feeling that my kids are gonna fail. How are they gonna fail with active AIPs? How are they gonna fail with 504 behavioral plans? The plans that supposed to be reinstated every year, but have not been reinstated in this year. Like I said, I have talked to Ms. Walker, I have talked to Ms. Blankenship, I have called principals, I have talked to staff members, I have got the paperwork myself and emailed it over to the school officials. I'm not understanding why that either my kids is being here this only four year because I'm ready to get them up out of this school system, is at a risk of failing, and then also friends that my kids have encountered with have been kicked out of school this year. How you gonna get some students back if you kicking them out of school? Every day you kicking them out of school. It's, I mean, it's proper protocol. If you gonna send my child home from school, then I'm gonna get a phone call, not a resource officer bringing my child home. What does a resource officer do in bringing my child home? Now, never mind, it was another lady that got up and said she want to hold accountability to the parents, guess what? The parent, the mayor, the, the school official, the school board, the teacher, every last one of us should be held accountable for when it comes to these children. Ma'am, I'm sorry, I understand that my time is up, and I hope that you please let me say one more word, because when I came to this school, and when I came to the school board, and I came to everybody, I was treated as an aggressor. I, I was, I was, I was, I was approached by uniform officers, you know? When I came as a concerned parent for my child. So, and, and part of being in this community, I hope that you listen to me, because as you want our board to stand up and us to listen to y'all and go as y'all commandments and stuff like that, as we should be a team, we all should be a team. Even y'all standing there judging, you should be a team with us as well.
We're listening, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Bradley Ballard, and I was born and raised right here in Blavos. My family has lived here for generations, and like so many others in this room, I've stayed because I believe in this city. I believe in its potential, and most of all, I believe in its children. But today, I'm standing here, not just with belief, but with urgency. This school district is in crisis, and it's time for bold action. And I'm asking you with full conviction to dissolve the Blavos School Board and take control of this district before more damage is done. We're watching a system collapse in real time. Test scores at rock bottom, student morale is low, families are leaving, but what's even worse is how our most vulnerable children are being treated. If Blavos has, if a child has special needs in Blavos, more often than not, they're pushed aside, sent home to learn, and in isolation because the district lacks the staff, and frankly, the will to support them. This is not education, this is abandonment. And it's doing real harm to children who deserve every opportunity to grow with their peers. But it doesn't stop there. The leadership here, or lack thereof, has created a toxic environment. I've heard from employees who've been talked down to, disrespected, and even humiliated by board members. Teachers are afraid to speak up. Vendors and service providers have come here in good faith to offer solutions, only to be mocked, dismissed, by the people who think leadership means domination and not collaboration. And now I'm, and now I'm hearing the board president is blaming Sheila Whitlow for the district's failure to even secure a superintendent or an interim superintendent? Let me be very clear. This mess is not the fault of one woman. This is the result of a board that has too, that is too prideful to lead and too fractured to function. We cannot keep pointing fingers while our children fall through the cracks. Today, you have the power to stop this. You can cut through the chaos and bring order, accountability, and hope back to our schools. This isn't about politics, it's about protecting the next generation. Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. The next three, Blake Carr, Joe Coleman, and Waygular Jackson. Are any of those people here? Okay. Is that on the wall?
No.
Oh, you gotta go by your list?
Yes. The board says no. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Juanita Jackson. I want to talk about proactive and reactive. I want to commend the state for coming here and being reactive in the way that you are being reactive. I commend you, because in every system, we should have a check and balance. Didn't find it here. The second thing is, follow the money. I was always told with the felon business, homicide, in a felon city, follow the money. So I'm glad to see that the state has independently come in to follow the money. Now, we have to be proactive. We have Dr. Perkins, who was here doing an excellent job. She had a plan, she was proactive. She was dismissed by the same board that now you want to dismiss. Let's save some money. My suggestion is, let's bring Dr. Perkins back, get her to drop that lawsuit, save us some money. Reimburse her for her attorney fees and back pay, saving us some money, because the numbers is what counts. And give her a written reprimand, because she was accused of misappropriating the money, but look what we find when we follow the money. Because everybody was doing what they were doing. You know, nobody was getting a check and balance system. As you heard, the new, I guess she's our new accounting director for the school board, but listen, when it all boils down to, I remember the song Whitney Houston scene, "I believe the children are our future, teach them well to lead the way." We're not doing that here, and we gotta get back to doing that. So, again, I commend the state for coming in and taking over, but we need to save some money, because that's, you know, school is a business. The kids are our product. They are our future. That means when these board members leave, they step something. If they're not equipped now, we're just gonna repeat history. Save the money, let's get back to the plan of being proactive and not reactive. Let's get Dr. Perkins back in here and try to come to some kind of resolution, because she has a plan. She's qualified.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, that is the last of our comment period. Ms. Smith?
Again, we recommend and ask that this board classify this district in need of Level 5 intensive support.
At this time, board, is there any other discussion? Comments?
Would it be possible to put the slide back up with the three recommendations on the screen? If not, we'll just go with the oral version that Ms. Smith can reread now.
You might have it in your board packets on the very last.
Thank you.
Are you signed up? What's your name? Carlani Lewis, signed up. We've got it right here.
Okay, thank you. It's coming up on screen.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, hi. I am, my name is Carlani Lewis. I'm a former board member for eight years, and I just want to know and let everybody know the why we were here from the first year, from the year before, because all of us had gotten together, got to the board, told the board, reached out, we needed help. We needed help. We seen things that was going on that wasn't right, and we asked for help. That's the reason why you all made it down the year before. Okay? That seat that we received was great, thanks hats to the teachers and everybody else, but one of the reasons was, it was under Dr. Perkins' hat. She did that. She was doing what we asked her to do. She was promoting, doing everything that we asked her to do. It was the board that stuff became personal. Yes, I got off the board, that I felt like I could help my students better, my parents better, my teachers better, and that's what I do every day. But I want to make another statement with our students. Have anybody actually sit down and ask our students what is wrong? What do you need to be educated? I have. Mace first, it was so shocking, and I can share my stories with some of you that we got from the students. My students is number one proprietor to me. We have smart kids, they want to be educated, and we're, I, I say, she said, "Product," I don't look at my kids being a product, I look at them being our future, because they are our future. They just need help. Either if it's the parents, I remember coming to school, I graduated '84. If it wasn't our parents, guess what? It was our teachers. They were on us. They were making sure we got what we needed to go forward. So I'm asking now, the decisions that you make, I noticed that when you did your takeovers, I read up on all of them, that you did resolve the board, you suspend, you did whatever you had to do. Please do the same, so we can start all over and start fresh, because we need it here at Blavos School District. Thank you.
Board, so the first action in the request would be to classify in need of Level 5 intensive support. If the board chooses to do that, then after that, then I would ask for a second motion with the other two recommendations up there, to remove the authority of the local board and authorize the commissioner to assume all authority, and then also direct the commissioner to appoint a superintendent and pursue the possibility of a transformation contract. So that would be two motions that we're requesting today.
I would move that we classify the Blavos, Blavos School District in need of Level 5 intensive support.
Second.
Dr. Arnold made the motion, there was a second by Adrian Woods. Is there any further discussion? I believe we should do a roll call vote. Secretary? Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Before I make my call, I just want to say that these decisions are tough, especially tough when you're in your hometown. But I made an oath, and also I made a promise to my mom and the stakeholders. Yes.
Dr. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Moore, Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we got a yes from her. That's unanimous on that motion?
Again, the second request would be to remove the local, to move the authority of the local board and authorize the commissioner to assume all authority of the local district board of directors, and to direct the commissioner of education to appoint a superintendent and to pursue the possibility of a transformation contract. So that's our recommendation.
So, so moved? Do I need to read the entire motion? Okay. So I make a motion to remove authority of the local board and authorize the commissioner to assume the authority of the local district board of directors, and to direct the commissioner of education to appoint a superintendent and to pursue the possibility of a transformation contract.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Hunter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Lee Keener. All those in favor, say aye. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote again, I'm sorry. Ms. Woods?
Yes.
Dr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you. We really appreciate all of you being here. I know this is a very difficult and emotional day, but I do believe that the community and the children will benefit from this. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.